All right. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome everyone to a council meeting of Monday, June 15th. First off, call to order. I see everyone except who's missing there. I'll just do a roll call then. Counselor Bothwell?
Here.
Counselor Dunstall?
Here.
Counselor Frake? Counselor Frake is here, but he's muted. Counselor Cadwell? Counselor Cadwell's here. Counselor Ritchie?
Here.
And who's next? Counselor Sharp isn't here yet. Counselor Vane isn't here yet. Counselor Vardy?
Here.
All right. Now, do you have the closed session declaration? First off, are there any disclosures of interest? Seeing none, we're going to move into closed session right now. Oh, the clerk's going to read a declaration first. So, sorry about that.
So, good evening, members of council. Before we begin the closed session, all members are reminded that any discussions enclosed are to remain confidential as per procedural bylaw and our code of conduct for the Council of the Town of Grinsby. Before we begin, I need each member that is attending electronically to confirm the following: that you understand that matters are to remain confidential, and confirm no one else is present with you, and confirm no one else can hear this closed session, and confirm that you are not using any electronic devices other than your tablet or computer for the purpose of this video conferencing only, and confirm that you are not recording this portion of the meeting. If you acknowledge all of the above, please reply with "I understand" and confirm to all of the statements. Counselor Bothwell?
I understand and confirm to all the statements.
Counselor Dunstall?
I confirm and understand all the statements.
Thank you. Counselor Frake?
I confirm and understand all the statements.
Thank you. Counselor Cadwell? Counselor Cadwell, you have to unmute yourself.
There we go. I confirm and to all the statements.
Yep. Counselor Ritchie?
I understand and confirm all of these statements.
Thank you. Counselor Sharp is not here yet. Counselor Vane?
I confirm and understand. I confirm and understand all the statements.
Thank you. Counselor Vardy?
I understand and confirm all the statements.
Thank you. And Mr. Mayor?
I confirm and understand all the statements.
Thank you. I have Counselor Sharp joining right now.
He just stated that he's having some computer problems. He will be joining soon.
Okay. We'll go into close.
Municipal Act, personal matters. Counselor Dunstall?
It's a yay.
Counselor Frake?
Yay.
Counselor Cadwell?
Yay.
Counselor Ritchie?
Yay.
Counselor Sharp? All right. Counselor Vane?
Yay.
Counselor Vardy?
Yay.
And myself, a yay.
Karaoke. Hey, Reg, you can karaoke.
I prefer to hear you, Dave.
Hey, Bill. Want your supper?
Welcome back. Apparently, we're live streaming now, so I guess we came up in a lot faster than we expected.
Are we live already?
Yes, we're back to live now.
Wait, no. Hello?
Because our actual starting time is not until seven, I guess we're going to be in recess until seven. So, sorry for the on-organization.
Test. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
All right, welcome back, everyone. We just need a mover and seconder to receive the closed session report. Moved by Counselor Cadwell, seconded by Counselor Ritchie. Moved by Counselor Cadwell, seconded by Counselor Ritchie. Resolve that the closed session in regards to meet and greet with the Director of Planning, Building and Bylaw final candidate be received. On favor, Counselor Bothwell?
Yay.
Counselor Dunstall?
Yay.
Counselor Frake?
Yay.
Counselor Cadwell? Counselor Cadwell's a yay. Counselor Ritchie?
Yay.
Counselor Sharp?
Yay.
Counselor Vane?
Yay.
Counselor Vardy?
Yay.
And myself, a yay. So, that's carried. Up next, we have council minutes of June 1, 2020. I need a mover and a seconder. Moved by Counselor Ritchie, seconded by Counselor Dunstall. Moved by Counselor Ritchie, seconded by Counselor Dunstall. Resolve that the minutes from the June 1, 2020 council meeting and June 4, 2020 special council meeting be approved. Recorded vote, Counselor Bothwell?
Yay.
Counselor Dunstall?
Yay.
Counselor Frake?
Yay.
Counselor Cadwell? Counselor Cadwell's a yay. Counselor Ritchie?
Yay.
Counselor Sharp?
Yay.
Counselor Vane?
Yay.
Counselor Vardy?
I'd like to know if it's possible to lift the minutes of the special council meeting of June 4?
Yeah, we could lift and vote on them separately. We'll just, so we'll just approve the June 1 one right now.
If everyone's... If we're going to lift the closed minutes, are we not going to go back into closed session? Because we can't discuss those in open.
Well, we can just approve them or not approve.
Point of order, I think you already have a majority that's already voted to accept the minutes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm happy with that because it's only the open session meeting minutes anyway. So, Counselor Vardy, you can be against that if you want, and I'm for it. So, those are both carried. And up next, we have report FIN 20-10, 2019 portfolio investments. Stephen?
Thanks, Lordship.
And Sonia, welcome.
Yeah.
Would be presenting the report.
All right.
Mayor and council, thank you. The town's investments are governed under OREG 43897. This requires that the Treasurer to report to council our investment portfolio on an annual basis. The town's objective is to invest all the funds of the corporation in a prudent manner to maximize the rate of return while minimizing the risk and ensuring liquidity, essentially low-risk investments. Schedule A in the report outlines the town's investment portfolio as of December 31, 2019. If you refer to this schedule, you will notice we have investments in the general fund, which earned 202,000 of investment income in 2019, the trust 22,500, and the reserve fund of 239,000. We invested in a mixture of bonds and GICs. The book value of our investment is 20.8 million versus the market value of 21.2 million. Thank you, council. Now, I will take any questions.
I couldn't hear you.
Counselor Bothwell?
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. Thank you for your presentation. Sonia, just a question. I did raise this with the Director earlier, and I just, if you could help clarify, I noticed when I spoke to the base budget at budget time that the cemetery investments were not showing in the 20, the actuals were not showing in the 2019 budget. The last time the actuals received investment income showed in the budget, actuals was 2017, and there was no actual showing for the investments in 2018 or 2019. And he mentioned that there was a bit of a gap in timing, and then that also meant that none of the investments were reflected in the budget documents that we received. Can you explain that? Just help me out and understand that, please?
Through you, Mayor. So, at the time that we did the budgets, we had not reconciled our investment income yet, and we did not have the final statements for the year. Next year, we are planning on doing it on a quarterly basis, more timely. However, during the time of the budgets, we had not recorded the actuals.
So, that means that the budget, the final budget numbers didn't show 450K of investment income. Is that correct?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Frake?
Thank you, Mayor Jordan, to Sonia. Hi, Sonia, how are you?
Good, how are you?
A quick question for you. They're looking at the province of Newfoundland, Labrador giving is 9.83%. That's pretty damn good.
That's great.
The question I wanted to ask was how often do we get, how often do we get paid out on these? Do they come in forms of dividends? How does it work?
So, we are going to get paid out at maturity, and we get interest payments that we accrue. So, we're going to get that interest at the end of the term.
Okay, and at the end of the term, do we just reinvest it in the same, usually in the same bond?
We would like to reinvest it in the same bond. However, 10.95 is high. Hopefully, the market now is probably not going to be good. So, we're going to try to do the best that we can.
All right. That's it for me. Everything else is pretty understandable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Sharp?
Thanks, Mayor Jordan. My question to the Deputy Treasurer is you said, you talked about book value and our current market value. What was the difference between book value and market value? And have we lost any money in our investments?
So, right now, if we were to sell our investments as of, well, not right now, as of December 31, if we were to sell our investments, we would have got 21.2 million dollars. However, on our books, it's recorded at 20.8. So, accounting practices tell us that we have to record it at cost rather than market value.
So, have we lost?
So, in that situation, no, we have not. We have not. The market value is higher than what's recorded in our books.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Vardy?
Thank you. Hi there.
Hi.
How are you? Hi. So, my question for you is a couple of them. Do we, do we manage our own investments, or are they done through the bank?
So, they're done through Queensberry as our securities trader. So, they, we ask them questions. They, they give us their professional opinion, but we do it through Queensberry.
Okay, so do we lose fees like then when, like, do they take off their fees from this bottom line?
I don't think so. I don't know if Stephen, maybe you can help me with that. Is there any fees that they charge?
Yes, there's a commission that is charged. It usually amounts to about 20 basis points, 0.2 of a percent.
Okay, and then I guess my third question is, because I recently know that some other funds are paying quite well, some US funds and stocks. Sorry about that. Not supposed to have anyone else in the room, but I have heart. But, like, how carefully do we manage this to try and, you know, check our money and move it around where we're going to get the most return for our investments?
Yeah, so we're limited under the municipal act and Ontario regulation in terms of what we can invest in. It's very limited. We can invest in government guaranteed bonds, Canadian government guaranteed bonds, or provincial bonds, or GICs, that type of investment, which is very secure, guaranteed. We can't invest in equities. We can't invest outside of Canada. Unfortunately, the provincial government doesn't, I don't think they trust us. And you know what? Honestly, it's public money, and we have to be very careful with preservation of capital.
No, it's all low-risk.
Extremely low-risk, yes.
And all Canadian.
All Canadian.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Vane?
Sonia or Stephen, we have this investment. You say it's worth 21 million, correct? For 21.1?
Yes.
If we're, if we have, this is just me thinking out loud, so I just need some clarification. Do you have substantial debt that we should really be looking at paying off that probably is charging us higher interest than we're earning?
So, I don't think, how much, we have about $3 million worth of debt.
Okay, that's substantial to me.
So, I don't know, Stephen, if...
So, why would you pay that off instead of paying interest that is going to cost us more than we're making on our investment?
Yeah, so the, quite a large portion of our investments are reserve fund investments, which are restricted. So, development charge, gas tax monies. And in the general section of the report, basically is our reserves. Those monies are for, you know, future capital replacement and for, you know, all different types of equipment or infrastructure. So, yes, technically, you could take those monies out, but it wouldn't be recommended. They're there for a specific purpose in the future for you, generally capital replacement.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Seeing no further questions, thank you, Sonia and Stephen, for your report. Great job. We need a mover and a seconder for this report. Counselor Vane, Counselor Frake? Moved by Counselor Vane, seconded by Counselor Frake. Resolve that report FIN 2010, 2019 portfolio investments be received for information. Recorded vote, Counselor Bothwell? Counselor Dunstall?
Yay.
Counselor Frake?
Yay.
Counselor Cadwell? Counselor Cadwell's a yay. Counselor Ritchie?
Yay.
Counselor Sharp? Counselor Sharp? Counselor Vane?
Hey, I was disconnected there for a minute. Did I miss?
Counselor Sharp, yay or nay for the report FIN 2010?
Yay. Sorry, I was just briefly disconnected.
That's okay. Counselor Vane?
Yay.
Counselor Vardy?
Yay.
And myself, yay. So, that is carried. Up next, we have report FCR 20-07, Grinsby Fire Department, 2020 information report. Acting Chief Thompson, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council. It's that time again. I just wanted to provide you an update report on what's been going on, a high-level report. Our year, like all departments in the town, has been a journey of challenges, but has also brought us opportunities. As reported, the reduction in firefighter hours this year has been, in emergency incidents and training, has been quite significant, decreased. This is a direct result of the ongoing pandemic. Our response protocol for medical changed early in the pandemic, that meaning that EMS came to us and asked us that we only respond to the most critical calls. Those are vital signs, absence, unconscious person, or someone choking. The traveling public was reduced due to the pandemic, so we've seen quite a reduction in car accidents to other rescues. But we continue to improve efficiencies in-house, and one of them was using our town mechanic more because of documentation and records management, and it took a burden away from our firefighters that were trained mechanics. So, we found some efficiencies there. Our fire prevention division, they, as you know, deferred all their routine and annual inspections, but we're just starting to ramp that back up. We have to meet legislative requirements. So, we're working with the senior homes on how to enter these homes safely. One of the other highlights of that was working with the bylaw department, assisting them early on in the pandemic, going out, ensuring that people were not congregating. And we worked very well with town staff in updating our website and public education messaging throughout. Our training division, this was, this was quite an opportunity for us to learn during the pandemic. We provided a lot of online training, and we're currently moving to four-night training instead of our two nights. So, the facility at, up at Station 2 will be used from Monday to Thursday nights by Grinsby Fire Department. The big one, emergency management. As you know, across the globe, this has never been so highlighted. I personally, I want to express my gratitude to council for agreeing to the shared service and manager in the West End. I think the leadership, and I know the leadership and the experience Kathy McGrath has brought to our emergency team has been instrumental in our response to COVID. What can I say about our town staff? I've been involved in many emergencies in almost 30 years, and the people that I have and the passion and dedication they have shown to the health and safety of our staff being, remaining number one, and ensuring the priorities and essential services of our being maintained has been incredible. So, a shout out to all of our town staff that's been leading that way. Grinsby Regional Training Center, the pandemic had a significant hit on us. All our spring courses had to be canceled, and that was a direction put out by the province and the Ontario Fire College. So, we're working towards new operational processes of getting this back up and running. We do have some bookings coming up for the Training Tower in the next two weeks from City of Branford to Bran County to Town of Lincoln. So, things are looking good again, and we're working with private industries. Discussions are ongoing, but that's been slowed due to the pandemic. Administratively, we have several projects on the go, as you can read, and I think the initiative is completed today. The INR bylaw is done, fireworks bylaw was updated. And all I can say, as you can see, our journey at GFD has taken, has taken many twists and turns during COVID, and I must say it's provided us a lot of opportunities for us to step back and what we can do better as an organization too. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council.
Thank you, Acting Chief Thompson, for your presentation. Very good job that you have been doing during this pandemic. I've seen quite a lot of you. Questions, Counselor Vane?
Yeah, good evening, Chief. I got a question for you. You mentioned about the EMS not asking you to attend and listen to VSAs. Well, I appreciate that. I do have a concern with that, but I mean, you would be a better judge than I. If someone were to phone up and have chest pains, that's not a VSA, but it potentially could lead to one which would delay the arrival of you. Now, traditionally, in other areas where I've lived, the EMS is usually not as speedy a response as the fire department. Usually, the fire department is usually the first responder. Is that a consideration? And I appreciate the concern of both sides. You don't want to share anything, but is there any consideration to maybe expanding it a little bit beyond the VSA?
Through you, Mayor. Counselor Vane, we do still go to certain calls when EMS won't be there, but I will be honest with you. In Grinsby, EMS is on scene before Grinsby Fire, probably 95 to 99% of the time. They are on scene before we are. As you know, as a volunteer service, our assembly time is five minutes to the fire hall and the time we get going and everything. So, it's not like having the career department drive the door a little quicker than we are.
Second question, do we still man the station during daylight hours for the West End to reduce the times?
Through you, Mayor. Some of the challenges of COVID has brought us that we've changed our summer response. We are looking at weekends to try not to create, we didn't know how it was going to progress in that. So, we're going to have firefighters on call on the weekends when we are very lean due to the summer and people wanting now if it's going to actually open up and 10 people and they could travel a little. So, from Friday till Monday morning, we will have coverage. And so, you can see by the graphs and the charts I provided, the West End, we do receive calls, but you can see where majority of the calls are still in the real tight urban area of between here and Castle Blanca, downtown Grinsby.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Bothwell?
Hi, thank you, Mayor Jordan. Acting Chief Thompson, thank you for the report. It's five months' worth of hard work I can see in there, and lots of responses. I was surprised to see 27 unauthorized burn and overheat responses on that chart. I just wondered if you can tell me what types of response, what is that? What does that mean? And were there any fines or issued as a result?
Through you, Mayor. Counselor Bothwell, unauthorized burn is when someone has an open air burn that has not been given approval through our open air bylaw 12-40. So, basically... Um, so basically, we will arrive and since we have so many newcomers to Grimsby, we go and explain it to them. We're proactive in public education and tell them why they're not allowed to open air burn. Um, it depends where they live. Some people have been sent invoices in accordance with our E N R bylaw and consolidated fees. So I would say majority have been educated, but just today, I know a fact I, too, are being sent. And overheats can turn into cars, to something simple at a house that can overheat. And that's just in the same category as, it's an incident reporting number for the Fire Marshal's Office.
Thanks. I was just surprised to see twenty-seven since, um, December. So that's January, February, March, April, May, and we're now entering the summer season. Do you see those numbers rise up significantly as we get into the summer?
Through you, Mayor Counselor, yes, I do. I, uh, I'm aware of certain things going on and it is a concern. We're trying to educate the public. We're gonna be doing more messaging as best we can. And anybody's free to call us and we'll, our prevention staff will talk with them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Vardy.
Thank you for, thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, thank you for the report, Chief. That's very comprehensive and it, it's very informative. And it's great to get an overall picture of what's actually happening. Um, on the subject of unauthorized burns, um, I know a lot of people have these little fire pot kinds of things, like a, a fire stove. And they've got an opening in the middle and you burn things and it's got kind of a, what do you call it? Chimney.
Chimney. Chiminea.
Chiminea, is that what they're called? Okay. Are, are they legal? Like, are you allowed to burn things in them?
Uh, if you actually look when they're for sale, and like Canadian tire flyer I'll use, for example, it actually in little fine print says, check with local fire department first before purchasing if you're gonna use it for open air burning. In Grimsby, there is areas of town that have permission to have recreational burns. Uh, it's well stated in the open air bylaw, but in majority of our areas, including myself, that they, they are illegal to have an open air burn. It's just not the fire itself that we have seen, and I believe you saw my email with the one fire from Chiminea. Um, it's the smoke too. The smoke, uh, can, our housing with the urban development, the West End alone, that smoke inhibits somebody to use their property. And then now it leads to civil matters and there is civil cases against this. So it falls on Environmental Protection Act, besides just our own, the fire code permission to burn.
Okay. All right. So no roasting marshmallows. Thank you.
Counselor Frake.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, hey, Chief Thompson, how you doing?
Well, sir, and you?
Good, thank you. Great report. Thank you very much. Very comprehensive, a lot of great information. And I must compliment you and your team for doing a great job throughout this whole emergency situation. A quick question for you, um, on appendix B, emergency responses, there was a hundred and ninety-nine responses in total, almost two hundred, of which twenty-five percent of them were attributed to false alarms. Fifty-one of them, the highest number, was false alarms. When you say false alarms, can you describe what that means? I mean, is it like someone just, uh, being frivolous or, uh, mischievous and pulling alarms? Uh, what's the, can you explain it to me?
So through you, Mayor, uh, Counselor Frake, the, uh, the false alarms is, you think of many of our industrial and our mid-rises to high-rises, they all have fire alarm systems, the businesses have fire alarm systems. Sometimes they go, they go off accidentally and many times. So of course, we have to attend. Soon as the fire alarm goes off, it's a sign that it could be a building fire. Um, we try to work with the owners and in our E N R bylaw, we have a nuisance deployment. So after the first time, it's a, it's a fair warning. Second time, we're back there within weeks or so, we do set, uh, fees and charges against them. But if they do come to me and we work with them and they put money back into improving their, um, fire safety systems or into prevention education, we'll look at waiving that as long as they can prove they've done that. So it is false alarms to all these buildings, not malicious.
Okay, so if they, if they have one alarm, you let them off? If they have two or three, whatever, you, you start charging for our costs?
Yeah, we can even do it after one if we really want. Depends on circumstances, very rare though.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Counselor Sharp.
Thanks, Mayor Jordan. Uh, my question to Chief Thompson. What about, um, it's about fires in your yard? What about for cooking?
Through you, Mayor.
Are they allowed for cooking? Are they?
Through you, Mayor, uh, Counselor Sharp. Uh, technically, yes, if you had an open, uh, fire pit to, to cook solely to cook, it'd have to, you can do that. But according with our bylaw, you will be to, um, putting the fire out immediately after cooking. Um, we have shown up and people have had their marshmallows on there. They've done that, pretending that that's the best way to do it and thinking they're gonna beat the system. Meanwhile, there are propane or natural gas barbecue sitting there. They think it's easier that they enjoy the freedom of the open air burning. We didn't create this high density in Grimsby, the provincial government did, and now you have posted stamp lots. And we have to be very careful. Our needs and circumstances are different than other areas, and those other areas are gonna start experiencing it. Um, currently, I'm doing a review of the open air bylaw as a result of a, uh, a public survey going out. And I just want to be prepared for all of you. And the fun, the best part is, right now, I'm getting back from all these, uh, other municipalities in our area. I asked them how the permit process is working and how does it, uh, how well is that working? And it's great, they still respond to that residence and they've got a permit, but they still responded needlessly. So I don't know what the permit really solved.
So, so just to comment on that is that, um, if I were to have a fire to cook marshmallows, it's not because I don't have a barbecue to cook marshmallows, it's because I like to cook marshmallows on a, on a bonfire. All right, so, um, I mean, I could cook them on a candle or I could use a propane torch. But, um, you know, when it comes to having a responsible cooking fire, and, and I wanna underscore responsible, you use clean, dry lumber and then you make it safe afterwards. Um, I've read the bylaw and, and it says that, that I can do that. And of course, I live in a, in an older area with a bigger lot, so I feel that it would be safe. But I do understand, maybe in a townhouse or in, in certain areas, where of course that wouldn't be safe and, and you shouldn't do it at all. But it is allowed and, um, I would think it'd be good to, to educate people on, on that. And so, when, when, when could we do that? How could we do that? Do we have any, any plans?
Through you, Mayor. Uh, Counselor Sharp, um, laws are created because people are not responsible. And it's, if everybody's responsible as you were and other people, I wouldn't have to worry about this for fire safety. Uh, fire safety is everybody's responsibility too. I appreciate that you could have a fire in a bigger lot size to everything, but I'll always defend against an open air fire. Um, I've bought myself a propane fire pit for myself, C S A approved, and I could turn the propane off if necessary. But, uh, I'll be an advocate against the open air fires and Grimsby as our bylaw stands. Um, but as counsel, you have a decision and I'll work on a report and I'm doing some background work right now.
Thanks, Chief Thompson.
Okay.
Uh, seeing no further questions, uh, thank you very much for your report, Chief Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Have a good, have a good evening. Thanks.
All of you too.
All right, we need a mover and seconder, uh, for the resolution. Uh, moved by, uh, Counselor Cadwell, seconded by Counselor Frake. Moved by Counselor Cadwell, seconded by Counselor Frake, resolve that report F C R twenty dash zero seven dated June fifteenth, twenty twenty, with reference to the Grimsby Fire Department twenty twenty information report be received. Recorded vote, Counselor Bothwell?
Yay.
Counselor Dunstall?
Yay.
Counselor Frake?
Yay.
Counselor Cadwell?
Yay.
Counselor Ritchie?
Yay.
Counselor Sharp?
Yay.
Counselor Vane?
Yay.
Counselor Vardy?
Yay.
Myself a yea, so that's carried. Up next, we have a notice of motion. Is it still there?
It's a resolution.
Is it a resolution? Okay, it just says, oh, yes, a resolution from the notice of motion provided, uh, at our June first meeting. Uh, C I O Schlang is gonna comment.
Uh, can, do, do you want me to speak to my motion first? Because I'm changing, I'm amending it.
Sure.
Um, so.
Counselor Bothwell.
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. Um, so the, following the notice of motion, I reviewed my, uh, original motion and I'm gonna split it into two parts, and I did, uh, discuss this with the clerk. Um, the first part being the, um, uh, the content about regular meetings of, um, uh, council, uh, for, uh, the summer, for July and August. And, um, understanding that, uh, the well-being of staff is paramount, I wanted to amend my motion to retain the original one meeting for July, August, and September as per the procedural bylaw. And I think the clerk just has a, a motion for this portion to just amend the time, and I think it's only for July and August to six-thirty. So, um, that part of the motion, I'm, is just gonna be part of the procedural bylaw as normal for the summer with one meeting and just commencing at six-thirty. And then the second, uh, part of the motion will be, um, uh, whereas, uh, regular meetings of, uh, the town standing committee and advisory committees have been suspended as a result of and since the inception of the COVID pandemic. And whereas on March twenty-fifth, council for the, uh, Town of Grimsby approved by law twenty thirty-one to allow meetings to be conducted by electronic participation. And whereas such electronic participation is utilized by council, the Grimsby Public Library and other municipalities within the region has enabled the resumption of regular meetings and allowed the advancement of municipal business. Therefore, be it resolved that efforts to reinstate and schedule affected standing committee and advisory committee meetings using electronic participation be prioritized to allow for business continuity and efficient functioning of the municipal structure. So that would be the second, um, part of that, second, uh, part of that motion.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor? Um, we voted some time ago to go to committee of the whole. If we're gonna reinvent these standing committees, we'll need two-thirds vote to reopen it.
We, we won't, will we?
This is not to reinvent, this is just asking to, uh, continue.
Committee of the whole, so we're not standing committees anymore.
Committee, committee of the halls have been delayed because it's not ready yet. So, uh, so, uh, standing committees before we get committee of the whole, um, that, that will still work, in my opinion.
I thought we had passed the bylaw to create committee of the whole and we had wiped out standing committees. Uh, ask the clarification from the clerk, please.
C I O Schlang, you'd like to clarify?
Yeah, so the council agreed to move to committee of the whole. And what we're strongly recommending to council is that, um, throughout July and August, we want to work with council on, um, modifying the procedural bylaw. There's training that goes with that, focus our time on that effort. And I would strongly recommend that standing committees, uh, no longer be, um, be implemented for July and August and allowing us to complete the procedural bylaw and then move to committee of the whole sometime in September, no later than the end of September. That would be my strong recommendation. Staff have worked, it's been fifteen weeks of this COVID. It's eleven hundred hours of effort. I really need the staff to take some time off in July and August and allow us to really focus on the procedural bylaw and then enact committee of the whole and, and sometime this September timeframe. We're also deep into recovery now, as you know, going to stage two. We always said that that would be a lot more heavy lifting from our staff, from our limited staff, because we laid off a number of staff. And a lot of this relies on the corporate leadership team that would have to be in attendance at standing committee meetings. So I'm, I'm asking council to consider to, um, not reenact the, uh, reestablish standing committees. We'll go right to committee of the whole after the procedural bylaw. And as far as advisory committee meetings, we, we all like to get them started. Allow us to go through this recovery a little bit in the summer and, and see if we can get them started again sometime early fall. So thank you very much, Mayor.
So if the clerk can prepare the two motions, I'd like them voted on. I'm willing to do amend, um, the second motion to remove affected standing committees. I do want to leave advisory committee meetings in there because, um, the, uh, they're continuing with committee of adjustment. They're continuing with, um, some, uh, Grimsby Economic Development Committee work behind the scenes. And Heritage Committee needs to be, uh, I feel very strongly that it needs to be back, uh, operating, um, in order for us to be prepared for the Grimsby Beach Study, the Main Street East, um, R F P that's supposed to be done in quarter four. And if we don't start having those meetings, which we should be very capable of doing, we're not gonna be prepared to start actioning some of the, that business. So, um, I think it's really important that that advisory committee under the Ontario Heritage Act be, um, uh, start getting back into motion so we can get those things moving. So if the motions can be read, I mean, everybody has a right to vote on them, but that's my intention behind them.
I'll read the, the first motion. Um, we need, um, mover and a seconder. It's, uh, the six-thirty meeting times, um, on the third Monday of these months. Uh, mover and a seconder for that. Counselor Bothwell, Counselor Cadwell. Moved by Counselor Bothwell, seconded by Counselor Cadwell.
Sorry, before you read the motion, can I just ask a quick question?
Sure, Counselor Sharp.
So about our, so in the past, our, our meetings always switched from two a month to one a month in the summer, and they always changed to six-thirty.
Yes.
That was, it was for years that I can remember. That's how it worked since before I was on council. Do, so do we need a resolution to, to make that, which was already our procedure?
Yeah, I think, uh, the previous council, uh, did enact a resolution that moved them to seven back for the summer. So, uh,
Okay.
We'll have this resolution moved by Counselor Bothwell, seconded by Counselor Cadwell. Resolve that council meet at six-thirty P M for the council meetings for July, August, and September, and one meeting on the third Monday of these months be approved. Recorded vote.
Point of order, or point of inquiry, sorry. Through the mayor, um, since we've already had a meeting on this and approved the dates and the times, even though it's just a time change, will we not need, uh, two-thirds majority? As there'll be a reconsideration of a matter.
It's, it's actually just a confirmation, uh, uh, resolution.
Okay.
Uh, the clerk's gonna comment.
So for the schedule, uh, summer schedule, we always had a resolution to approve on the, uh, six-thirty time, just to confirm it.
All right, recorded vote, Counselor Bothwell?
Yay.
Counselor Dunstall?
Yay.
Counselor Frake?
Yay.
Counselor Cadwell?
Yay.
Counselor Ritchie?
Yay.
Counselor Sharp?
Yay.
Counselor Vane?
Yay.
Then nay. Okay.
That was a yes.
All right, thank you. Counselor Vardy?
Yay.
And myself, yea, so that's carried. And we need a mover and seconder for the second resolution.
I have a point of inquiry, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
Um, it was my understanding or my recollection, when we talked about moving to committee of the whole, that we discussed keeping the planning committee because there was so much, yes, Randy, there was so much activity, um, uh, in planning that, uh, it was felt that it would be useful to continue to keep that committee going. Counselor Bothwell, you recall the same thing?
Um, yeah, Counselor Vardy, yes, I, I recall that conversation as well, um, that there would be a separate meeting for planning. But the clerk may be able to confirm better.
Go ahead.
Okay. Through you, Mr. Mayor, um, we had committee of the whole approved, um, planning is part of the committee of the whole. It's when we do committee of the whole, maybe on the first Monday, if, uh, if the planning matters is too large, that would be moved to the third Monday. But it would still be committee of the whole with all of council.
But it would still be committee of the whole with all of council being in attendance.
Counsel Sharp. Or do you want me to read the resolution? I'll just read the resolution. I need a mover and a seconder. I'll read, I'll read it and then I'll get a mover and a seconder. Whereas the regular meetings of the town's advisory committees have been suspended as a result of and since the inception of the COVID nineteen pandemic. And whereas on March twenty fifth, twenty twenty, council for the town of Grimsby approved by law number twenty dash thirty one to allow the meetings to be conducted by electronic participation. And whereas such electronic participation as utilized by council, the Grimsby Public Library and other municipalities within the region have enabled the resumption of regular meetings and allowed the advancement of municipal business. Therefore be it resolved that efforts to reinstate and schedule affected advisory committee meetings using electronic participation be prioritized to allow for business continuity and efficiency functioning of the municipal structure. Mover and a seconder. Counsel Bothwell and Counsel Frake. Is there discussion?
Yeah.
Counsel Vardy.
Mayor Jordan, I have my hand up when you asked me.
Yeah.
So thanks, Mayor Jordan. My question is that how many people does it take, like if I look right now, how many people, how many staff members, I mean, are there for this for this live stream meeting? And then I think that part of the point of, of why we didn't switch was that it was because we want to go into we want to allow staff to have some time to A, prepare for us moving into committee of the whole and B, to give them a bit of a break because they've been working eleven hundred hours of overtime is what I heard through the pandemic. So I wonder how much staff involvement is there to train our standing committees to, so that they can be online? And then to manage, like, because this meeting, we have to put it, I mean, I get emails, it sends, I'm sure there's a lot of work in the background. And I think it's probably only certain staff who really have the expertise to do that. And that, and that kind of puts them on a, on a Tuesday for planning and on a Wednesday for public works. And on a Thursday for parks and rec and then.
Counsel Sharp, just, just to get you back on topic, we're only talking about advisory meetings, which is Grimsby Green, Heritage, GDAC and DIA, which DIA will, is already scheduling live stream meetings.
Oh, this isn't standing committees?
No, we're moving to standing committee. So it's not, it's, we're moving to committee of the whole. So this is not the standing committees. We're talking about the advisory committees.
So then these advisory committees, their minutes are approved at the standing committees.
The minutes will be approved at committee of the whole, so.
So just, if you just give me a chance to finish. So when we have like a heritage advisory committee meeting, like any resolutions that happen within there or later approved at the planning committee? And when we have green committee or, so I'm in favor, it's just how much, what, what kind of effectiveness can we have at these committees? And then my question is, because maybe if it's just standing or just the subcommittees might be easier, but I know that there's probably, how many people are at town hall right now? Can anyone answer that? And then with regard to the amount of people it takes to put these Zoom meetings on?
The advisory committees, when, when we do like something like committee applications, it's, it's very limited, the number of people that it need to be to do a Zoom meeting. So it's not, it's not a ton of staff time for an advisory committee, I wouldn't imagine. Certainly, and standing committee or advisory committee interviews, the committee of adjustment, we just did an interview for a new position, a replacement position, and, and it was quite easily done. The clerk set it up and, and there wasn't extra staff time on that, so.
Can you read the motion?
Yeah, I can, I'll read it completely. There are a bunch of speakers. So I'll go through the speaker's list.
Could you read the motion?
Yeah, I'll read the motion. Whereas regular meetings of the town's advisory committees have been suspended as a result of and since the inception of the COVID nineteen pandemic. Whereas on March twenty fifth, twenty twenty, council for the town of Grimsby approved by law number twenty dash thirty one to allow meetings to be conducted by electronic participation. And whereas such electronic participation as utilized by council, the Grimsby Public Library Board and other municipalities within the region has enabled the resumption of regular meetings and allowed the advancement of municipal business. Therefore be it resolved that efforts to reinstate and schedule affected advisory committee meetings using electronic participation be prioritized to allow for business continuity and efficient functioning of the municipal structure.
Thank you.
CIO Schlang, you wanted to comment?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, because I've always, I'm always worried about over promising and under delivering. And, you know, if you just think of active transportation, the green committee, that's, some of them are led by Sarah Sweeney. When I look at the amount of time she spent on the COVID and now the recovery, I'm just giving this as an example. There's going to be a lot of work in the stage two. The motion itself says to expedite it, but I'm just hoping that, you know, if council would consider that you allow us to go through the recovery period, let staff take some time off. And we reassessed this in the early September after Labor Day of how fast we get the advisory committees on board. I could, you know, we could work towards this resolution, but and even in the heritage, you know, there's people that need to take some time. We're, we lost some staff in that area, in the planning area, so we're rebuilding that. But if council could at least consider allowing us to go through this recovery, see what's happening with COVID throughout July and August and early September and just give us some time to properly roll out these advisory committees. We're all keen on it, but if you would just consider it to allow us some time to work through the recovery.
Counsel Vardy.
I don't think I had a question. Thanks.
All right. Counsel Vane.
I do have to support CIO Schlang and Counsel Sharp in that, you know, when our staff has worked their tail off to get us through this, they, we're actually going to, it sounds like based on what CIO Sharp said last meeting that we're going to come out of this relatively unscathed compared to a lot of other places. Let's not kill the rest of our staff in the process. So I, I think we, we need to really back off for the summer, let the staff catch up, get a breath. There's nothing that urgent that can't wait. Plus, as far as heritage, we've got a new planning manager coming in. Give her a month or two to get settled, get her feet wet, so that she can bring her expertise, which none of us have, to the heritage committee. So I am not going to support having any meetings period over the summer. I think we need to give the staff a break. You know, contrary to what other people have said, I care very much about the staff, so let's continue that.
Counsel Cadwell.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Jordan. So the only, I'm really thinking this one over too, and the only question I really have is there won't be, like GDAC just meets once a month. So the scheduling of these advisories would be similar as in the past. That's the plan. Thank you.
Yeah, I believe that there'll be exactly the same scheduling. I don't, I don't see any difference. Counsel Ritchie.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. I, I too want to caution moving into the committee because, you know, it's great that we just, we got announced today that we're going to go into phase two of COVID. But you're starting to see everywhere around the world relapses of COVID happening all over the place. And if something like that were to happen here, it would shut everything down once again. So I just think this is a little premature to, to be supporting right now.
Thank you, Counsel Ritchie. Counsel Sharp, I guess you spoke already. Counsel Bothwell, do you feel like a friendly amendment to say, starting in September, something like that? Does that work for you?
Starting in September does.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I'll see where I can change that. Maybe I'll just add, starting in September, right at the very end of this. Counsel Frake, you okay with that amendment, friendly amendment?
Yeah, that's, that's very reasonable, actually.
All right, I'll, I'll read the, I'll read the resolution again. Moved by Counsel Bothwell, seconded by Counsel Frake. Whereas regular meetings of the town's advisory committees have been suspended as a result of and since the inception of the COVID nineteen pandemic. And whereas on March twenty fifth, twenty twenty, council for the town of Grimsby approved by law number twenty dash thirty one to allow meetings to be conducted by electronic participation. And whereas such electronic participation as utilized by council, the Grimsby Public Library Board and other municipalities within the region has enabled the resumption of regular meetings and allowed the advancement of municipal business. Therefore be it resolved that efforts to reinstate and, and schedule effective advisory committee meetings using electronic participation be prioritized to allow for business continuity and efficient functioning of the municipal structure starting in September. Recorded vote, Counsel Bothwell.
Point of, point of order there, Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to put a motion on the, on the floor to defer it to the August meeting. As we won't know what's going on with COVID, so if we're not going to look to start to September, it makes more sense to vote on this in the August meeting.
Second that motion?
Yeah. To defer it to the August meeting.
Point of inquiry. If, if we defer it till August, is it possible that we could bring it back sooner if that required, if it required?
Not if we defer it to August, unless it's brought back as a separate resolution, but it's deferred, so.
Can we defer it, not without a timeline? That way, in case we want to bring it back, we can bring it back if there's a change?
Point of inquiry, Mr. Mayor?
Counsel Vardy.
Why don't we vote on the motion, the original motion? And if, you know, we will be able to see what happens by August and, you know, we can, we can vote to change the timeline then. But at least if, for those who are in favor, we can start to plan for it now. And, you know, and get ready for it and we can always change it if it doesn't, if it looks like it's, you know, the second wave is going to be onerous. I mean, I personally don't see the point in, in deferring it or, or putting it off. I'd rather, me personally, who planned to vote in favor, plan for it, so.
So, so Counsel Vardy, the deferral motion has to be put in first, so. Yeah, if Counsel Ritchie wants to change the timeline, that's up to, to him and Counsel Sharp, the mover and seconder.
So, since the two, the original authors of the, the motion stated to not even start it to September, I think August is a good time to defer this motion to. So I'm going to keep the deferring as, as is from the amendment to, to move it to September.
My, my question is just, what if, what if there's good news and we've learned that we can open sooner? And we want to, and we want to visit it before August? Then are we stuck in August? So there might be like a big announcement at the, at the province and they might say, we can do things, we might, we might have some good news, we might want to vote on it in, in July. If we just defer it indefinitely, like to, to a later date, but not a specific date, then we can bring it back whenever we need to.
Being that everybody is jumping in wherever they want here, can I jump in now? Because everybody seems to be speaking out term without putting their hands up or whatever. Can I say something? Mr. Mayor?
Counsel Frake.
Can we, can we just, can we just put something in that says pending any new revelations around COVID? Just, and then that would, if something comes up that changes things around COVID, then we have a different situation. So we have to go along with whatever the new rules might be. I think if we just cover that off, I think we've covered off all the problems and all the issues we have that we're talking about right now.
Counsel Ritchie.
Oh, sorry, thank you, Mr. Mayor. But if, if we, if something were to happen in regards to what Counsel Sharp's saying, I believe that we could easily bring a a notice to bring it back to the table and suspend the rules by two thirds vote. Otherwise, I say that we defer it to the August meeting as, like I said, the two authors of the motion already agreed that they didn't need to start until September. So I think we should have, and the meeting in August will have more accurate data to make that decision.
All right, I'll read this resolution to defer. Moved by Counsel Ritchie, seconded by Counsel Sharp. Resolve that the motion for council meeting scheduled to be deferred to August meeting. Recorded vote, Counsel Bothwell.
Nay.
Counsel Dunstall.
Yay.
Counsel Frake.
Nay.
Counsel Cadwell.
Nay.
Counsel Ritchie.
Yay.
Counsel Sharp.
Yay.
Counsel Vane.
Yay.
Counsel Vardy.
Nay.
And myself, I'm a nay, so that's defeated. Now I'll read the original motion. Moved by Counsel Bothwell, seconded by Counsel Frake. Whereas regular meetings of the town's advisory committees have been suspended as a result of and since the inception of the COVID nineteen pandemic. And whereas on March twenty fifth, twenty twenty, council for the town of Grimsby approved by law number twenty dash thirty one to allow meetings to be conducted by electronic participation. And whereas such electronic participation as utilized by council, the Grimsby Public Library Board and other municipalities within the region has enabled the resumption of regular meetings and allowed the advancement of municipal business. Therefore be it resolved that efforts to reinstate and schedule effective advisory committee meetings using electronic participation be prioritized to allow for business continuity and efficiency and efficient functioning of the municipal structure starting in September. Recorded vote, Counsel Bothwell.
Yay.
Counsel Dunstall.
Yay.
Counsel Frake.
Yay.
Counsel Cadwell.
Yay.
Counsel Ritchie.
Nay.
Counsel Sharp.
Yay.
Counsel Vane.
Yay.
Is that a nay or a yay? Okay. Counsel Vardy.
Yay.
And myself a yay, so that's carried. What do we have next? Up next, we have correspondence. Uh, any discussion on the correspondence? Seeing none, I need a mover and seconder, Counselor Frank. Seconder. Counselor Vardy. Moved by Counselor Frank, second by Counselor Vardy. Resolve that the correspondence received from area municipalities with reference to support of the Medical Staff Association of Niagara Health and the Medical Academies of Lincoln, Niagara and Wellen, Ministry of Health Billing Codes for the Provision of Virtual Care COVID-19 and the Request Proclamation of March 17th as Essential Workers' Day be received. Recorded vote. Counselor Bothwell?
Yay.
Counselor Dunstall?
Yay.
Counselor Frank?
Yay.
Counselor Cadwell?
Yay.
Counselor Richie?
Yay.
Counselor Sharp?
Yay.
Counselor Vane?
Yay.
Counselor Vardy?
Yay.
Myself, I'm a yay, so that's carried. Need a mover and seconder for the DIA correspondence. Counselor Richie mover. Counselor Dunstall, seconder.
Can we have some discussion on the DIA correspondence?
Sure, if you'd like to speak, Counsel Sharp.
So, thank you, Mayor Jordan. Um, so I've, I've read the letter from, it's from Mike Williscraft, who's the president of the DIA. And, and I spent some time with Mike downtown in Grimsby. And so he's presenting a few options that we can use to help our businesses downtown, and I think they're, they're talking about patios for restaurants. And, um, if, if the rest of council has not read the letter, um, he talks about, I think they're talking about closing either A, the entire Main Street for the whole summer, or, or B, just the Main Street parking and leaving the road open. Or C, um, allowing us to use some of the parking spaces behind the restaurants to make a, a patio area. And, and it looks like three out of the four restaurants have declined wanting a patio in the front on Main Street, but at least one of the restaurants has asked or has shown interest in, in creating a patio in the rear behind the 40 Public House. And, and he mentioned something in the letter, Mike mentioned, that they wanted a three-year commitment to allowing that summer patio behind in the parking lot to, to make it viable, to buy tables and, and, um, I presume like a gate for liquor license and umbrella, whatever is involved with that. So I don't know the DIA position on it, but, but the letter from the, from the president, and I actually went downtown, I, I walked with Mike Williscraft and we, we looked at the options and there, one of the pluses to this is that part of that area, there's some dumpsters and stuff and if we brought patios, if we allowed the, the restaurants to bring patios out there, I'm sure they would clean up that dumpster area because no one and some of the residents, I've received complaints about those dumpsters and it'd be really nice, maybe they could build a fence around it or even just, just keep it tidier for their patrons, and that would be a double plus to allow more space for the restaurants. And, and also to clean up some of that back area, I think if we have ever a resolution, like that, this might be a viable option to help our businesses and, um, any other discussion from my colleagues on council would be welcomed.
Thank you, Counsel Sharp, Counsel Frank.
No, you've got to unmute.
All right, so thank you, Mr. Mayor, just technology problems here. Uh, thank you, Counsel Sharp, that's, that's a fairly good uh, overview of what the letter said, uh, even though the DIA did not take a position on it, they just offered some potential opportunities or ideas. But it, it goes beyond the actual space, whether it be behind the building or in the, on the street, whether it be the parking spaces. There, there's lots of, um, controversy around closing downtown, and I think we need to broaden this a bit, there's, there's thoughts about having downtown closed in the evenings or on weekends, uh, permanently in the parking lots and the parking spaces. So there, there are so many possibilities. And some merchants don't want to close the streets, some do. Uh, there, there's a lot of moving parts here, a- and I don't know what the right answer is because I'm not a merchant downtown. I, I just hear all of them and every single one of them has a different view, and I think we need to find out which is the best optimum opportunity, the optimum thing we can do downtown to aid all of our merchants without anyone suffering. Uh, and that's, that's my concern, and, and as I said, I, I'm not a merchant downtown, so they all have different views and I think they need to hear them all. Um, and certainly the restaurants, uh, would like to open their patios, I think there's one that wants to open it up at, at the street level, some do not. Um, and yes, there are, would be investments involved and some of that will be restricted for some of them. But I, I'd just like to open this up for a more wholesome study or review so that we get a all of the merchants downtown participating in what's best for them. Uh, because they all have a lot to lose or gain by what we, what we, what we come up with, so. Uh, that, that's my thoughts on it, uh, Counsel Sharp, if you wanted my views, that there they are. Uh, so I welcome any more input from our, my other esteemed colleagues.
All right, Counsel Vane.
Um, based on discussions with retailers downtown and with residents, I will strongly oppose any attempt to remove any parking spaces or to clog up our sidewalks. You may accommodate one or two restaurants, but in the meantime, you're killing the other businesses. There is not enough parking down there, they've already made that very clear, many of the, uh, uh, businesses have said that. A lot of these businesses are, are right on the edge now because of COVID, there's talk of changing the sewer pipes in 2022, which is going to hurt them even more. You know, let's get businesses back up and running and support them in other ways, but shutting down the street, like even putting the farmer's market back there, I think could be very damaging to a lot of the businesses, so I think we need to leave our streets, uh, open and our parking lots open, and let's get through this, and as was discussed earlier, other countries right now are going into stage two, China started locking down towns again. Uh, so you know what, we're being foolish if we think we're out of the mud here because we're not. So we're just going to kill businesses if we start shutting things down to accommodate one or two businesses. That's it.
Counselor Dunstall?
Yeah, thank you, excuse me, thank you, Your Worship, um. Uh, I know with the Alcohol and Gaming Commission, they've relaxed the laws somewhat, but it, it's intended for those who have patios to add a little bit of extra space. Uh, the, uh, 40 Public House is looking at putting in a completely separate patio, and then he, I'm sure they'd have to go back to the Alcohol and Gaming Commission to get that approved formally, where if you've got an existing patio that's licensed, they're allowing you to uh, reach out a little further, and it looks like in the letter, I, I think they, uh, most of them declined and as Counselor Vane has said, uh, and I had sent out an email of, about a month ago suggesting maybe we give up a few parking spaces and there were that what, I didn't get much in the way of positive out of that, so it sounds like most of the merchants downtown don't want to lose any parking and, uh, closing the street for the summer or part of the summer. I, I don't know, maybe the evening might work, I'm, I'm not sure, but, uh, how we cor- correlate all this together, I'm not sure, Counselor Frank, you, I, I can hear your, your passion about trying to help, uh, it, it sounds like a lot of different merchants wanting different things, and I don't know how we're going to bring it all together, but patios, uh, yeah, like the 40 Public House want to spend a lot of money, uh, on a patio for three years, uh, uh, that's a big investment, that's a, uh, that, that would require a lot more uh, permit, well, not permit, but licensing, uh, from the Alcohol and Gaming Commission, I, I don't see how could get that up and running in, in a short period of time, like, uh, two or three weeks, it, it would take a lot longer. We only have about three months of patio left in the season, if we have a good September, yeah, that would make the third month, so I, I, I think, uh, the only thing we could look at for restaurants is expand, expanding their existing patios and most of them are on the sidewalk, uh, Judge and Jester has expanded theirs, they've put on a deck at the back. Uh, so they, so that they can social distance their tables. Uh, I don't think they're adding any tables, they're just making it larger to allow that six-foot spread between tables. Uh, so yeah, I, I'm, I feel for everybody downtown, it's a, it's a tough call. I haven't got the answer.
Counselor Cadwell?
There we go, yeah, thanks, uh, Mayor Jordan. I guess, uh, I'm all for what we can do to help the businesses and, uh, my question is, is there a, an idea of approximately how many of the parking spots, spaces would be lost by uh, these proposed expanded, uh, patios? And, uh, I, I'm just saying, and again, I do understand with the three-year commitment that they're asking, there's a, it is an investment, uh, getting tables, chairs, uh, coordinate, coordinating the area off too, so, uh, uh, again, would that fall under our, 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 uh, present patio bylaw, like so coming, uh, I think it's the, is it the end of September, the everything has to be taken down, so that's another question. Uh, if it's at the back parking lot, obviously, so. Yeah, um, hmm. I, uh, it's, it's, I, I think it's, uh, I'd like to see us do what we can do to help the businesses and, uh, again, with, uh, as Counselor Dunstall mentioned about the liquor licensing, that, well, that, that's between the businesses and the, uh, and the, and the, the government, so that, that's something that they have to deal with, so obviously we're involved partially too, don't get me wrong, but, uh, yeah, I, uh, again, from your perspective, Mayor Jordan, have you heard, it's just, it's just reached the regional level at all to close Main Street? Cause I'm not, I'm not a fan of that, and I'll say that, uh, uh, right now, so anyways.
To my knowledge, it hasn't reached the regional, um, um, regional, uh, level yet, uh, there is a public works, uh, meeting tomorrow at the region, uh, but, uh, it, it hasn't moved forward, uh, yet, and, and we're a unique situation because we don't have a lot of, uh, east-west corridors, so, uh, and ours is a regional road, uh, so, uh, up next, we have Counsel Vardy.
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. Um, you know, I, I, I'm quite sympathetic to the businesses downtown, and I, I think we have to do, you know, everything that we can to help them, and I, you know, we're in an unusual situation right now. Uh, like we're all experiencing this for the first time, and I, I guess my inclination would be, you know, for the, let's give it a try, let's see, you know, let's try a couple pilots for those that, you know, I mean, if someone wants to take up like two parking spots out front uh, of their establishment, that's only two parking spots, and I, I think that patios bring people, patios bring people in, in the summer, and, uh, we, we know from other places, there are these portable kinds of patios that you can, you know, put out and then take back in come the, come the fall or winter, and I think we should, uh, let people try a few different things and, and see what works. Um, I also think, you know, now's the time, and I'll be bringing forward a motion, um, now's the time to be rethinking how we want to see Main Street. Um, when, a- as we're moving into the, um, redoing of the pipes in 2022, because when that road's dug, dug up, you know, we can create a new vision for what we do along that part of Main Street. Um, you know, there, there's an opportunity to make it a lot more pedestrian inviting. Um, and you know, we can work with the region on various options for that. Uh, but now's the time to be thinking of that, so I, I guess, you know, I'm inclined to, you know, let's try it, and if, if we find that it's, you know, it's not at all, not at all workable, or what are the problems that we're experiencing with it? You know, well, it's a learning opportunity, but, uh, you know, I'd like to show some flexibility and allow the businesses that, that want to do something, to try and do something without, you know, completely giving up all our parking spaces, I, you know, I think we have an opportunity here, and I think we have an obligation to at least try new things to support our, uh, our businesses downtown. Thanks.
Before we go for a second round of questions, uh, and comments, uh, CEO Schlang, uh, we did talk about this, uh, for townwide at the EOC, uh, so CEO Schlang, um, some comments on?
Yes, it's, uh, it's been all hands on deck with our team, both in public works and planning to see how we could help, um, businesses with their patios, both on private and public property. Counsel Frank said it best, no good deed goes unpunished. You might think a couple, taking a couple spots away isn't going to be bad, but when you really talk to some other merchants along there, they get quite upset. But we are looking at this in any creative way we can and working really rapidly, we helped a business just today and less than probably two hours. So, uh, we will be looking at every possibility without jeopardizing public safety. Um, and it is a lot of moving parts, so even if we do a pilot on one, we really have to get the buy-in of the chamber in the DIA. And they're working with us, so we're trying everything we can. Counsel Vardy, our team is also ready to um, lift the spirits of the community by doing some kind of design charrette in the Main Street. You know, once we get through this, you know, the recovery and so, you know, a motion isn't needed, we want to do something really unique there to lift the spirits of the community in the downtown, to look at a new way of envisioning, uh, Main Street, with the Main Street, uh, a water line's being replaced, so we are going to be doing that. But, uh, again, we are helping every business. We are trying to help every business, I think if you talk to Rebecca or Mike, we're trying to help and it's kind of not a one shoe size fits all. And Counsel Frank said it best, just so many moving parts, you think you might help one, but then you make the others unhappy, and then they're loading areas and you know, so it, it is really difficult, we're trying the best we can. And, and the mayor has approved and myself, you know, no permit fees, moving quickly where we can and, and doing that on everyone that asks us.
Great, thank you, CEO Schlang, um, Counsel Frank, another comment?
Sorry, thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, my, my mouse is not working too well here. Yeah, I mean, there's, there's, um, we're all saying the same thing. I mean, we all want to help our businesses downtown, we want to make sure they succeed, we don't want to see them fail. They put a lot of their life, blood, sweat and tears and money into, into their businesses, and we all want to see them do well. Uh, restaurants probably, uh, would want spaces on, onto Main Street or at the, at the parking lot, or they just want more space so they can social distance when people are eating food, it's a little different than the, the other merchants like the retailers. Uh, so I don't know how we move this forward, but I think, I think we need to do something that's maybe a little more dramatic, maybe closing downtown in the evenings or maybe on weekends or and opening it up to pedestrianization, and I don't know how to take this forward, I'm looking forward, I'm looking to to staff to kind of help us come up with the right decision here. And to make the right decision, we have to talk to more than one or two or three merchants. I think we need to talk to a lot of the merchants, all of the merchants, and find out what works for them and see if we can find the best middle ground for everyone, because we do want all of them to succeed, I mean, there's no question about that. So, uh, you know, you, I, I think you just have to make an extra effort to do this, and I'm looking to staff to help us uh, get, get through this and, and find the right, the right, uh, the right mojo, thanks.
Counsel Vane?
Um, I, everybody keeps talking about helping the merchants, and yet all we seem to be doing is talking about plans to make it easier for some of the restaurants to have patios. Uh, I know several merchants downtown that will strongly oppose that, and I believe, uh, Counsel Frank and, um, I believe Counselor Dunstall, I've also spoken to Kevin of Harmony Jewelers, who is, uh, you know, telling us he can bring in a great client if we can get more parking. Uh, I know, uh, when I was campaigning, one of the biggest complaints was about the farmer's market, we're talking one night a week. And people were still upset, I still get calls about the farmer's market coming back. I, I think, you know what, every business downtown deserves a chance, we can't just try and help just the restaurants at the expense of everybody else. We have to consider all merchants, they need parking, there's not enough parking down there. We have to consider all merchants. They need parking. There's not enough parking down there. This is a problem that we inherited. It's something that we were going to do a study on, then we changed our mind. It's to remove any parking right now, I think, is just a horrible, horrible move. And I don't think it's going to do well. I think you will hurt businesses. That's my thought.
Counselor Sharp?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Jordan. I I think that I I agree with Counselor Frake. We are all on the same page. We want to help our our businesses and and more than just the restaurants, but the other thing that I have to consider is the residents that I that I represent. So because that's a road, and we have a small number of east-west corridors, as Mayor Jordan mentioned, and right now the South Service Road is closed because they're putting in like a 30-inch new water main. So the South Service Road, which is normally a way that you can get from the downtown or the whole West End all the way over to Bartlett and beyond is not not open. And at one point, we had the Elm Street Bridge closed, where they did some repairs by the Lions Pool. And it causes like a major bottleneck. And then occasionally, we have problems at the on the QEW where people bypass and come through Grimsby. And there can be other examples, but so I work in town and and we talk about on the days that it's already closed, a market, it's only closed for less than half the day. And and people in my office warn each other that like, it's market day and like, there's a bit of of chatter around like, oh, we got to take alternate route like. So if I have to, I I want to support the businesses, and I I think that there's options, and we should hear more from the businesses. But I think that the option of of closing Main Street for an extended period of time, no vehicle traffic. I'm not sure that's that's even an option. And then I also picture these businesses are only open for about 10 hours a day. So like from I don't know whether they open at seven or nine or until six or seven, or I don't know. So I picture when the businesses closed at eight or 10 o'clock, and and the person trying to get from one side of town to the other, driving up to some sort of barricade and and looking through an empty Main Street, like tumbleweeds rolling by, no businesses or on a rainy day, right? And like, you're on your way, for example, to my office. And then you get to this barricade and you and you think, why is this closed? Why is this? Why can't I drive on Main Street? It's 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 the main street in town. And so I think that the closing Main Street for an extended period of time, being one of only really three east-west routes in town, and currently with one of those closed, it's it's just, I'm not going to support closing Main Street completely. And but but I will, I'd like to entertain some more discussion with the DIA. And I personally went for a walk downtown to to look at what's what's open. And and some of these restaurants have a viable option for patio in the rear, and they can take up with the province for their permits, but they want at least one of them wants wants a commitment. So if they're going to spend, I don't know, $5,000 or something, I'm just guessing at cost, they want to know that we're going to give them three seasons to operate. And and I would 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 gladly agree to that. But I'd like to hear more from the DIA, and this is just a motion of correspondence. We just receive it. So maybe we've had enough discussion. But anyhow, I'm happy to hear more from the DIA.
Counselor Dunstall?
Thank you, Your Worship. I I have to come to the defense of restaurants. Restaurants were the first to be shuttered. There, some of us have been doing takeout. It was the announcement today by Premier Ford that we would be going into stage two. So patios are the only things that restaurants can add to their takeout at this point in time. And most retail has, especially at street level, have been open. So most of the merchants downtown have been open for a number of weeks. Restaurants have been taking a real beating. We, I should remind everybody that the O Canada A over on Lundys Lane in Niagara Falls has now permanently closed after 26 years because they just can't see how they can make it work as a dinner theater anymore. So we lost O Canada A, and there's going to be many more that are going to fall by the wayside. And I'm not trying to lessen the pain that the retail is going through because it's been very painful for them. But if there is a way, like Counselor Sharp said, if we could commit to something in the back parking lot for, say, the 40 Public House, I know if you read the letter in the, I think it's a third or fourth paragraph, most of them declined on expanding their patio on the fronts. So I'm I'm not sure why, because that's all we can do as of Friday is open our patios. We cannot open our restaurants yet. So I'd sure like to see if we could get staff to do a little more inquiry into what what would help those restaurants downtown. Thank you.
Counselor Ritchie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, so I I agree that with all the statements there, and I think I heard the comments already that our EOC was trying to look at as many things as possible to help out our business community. So I was just wondering, I know this is correspondence that maybe we could refer this correspondence to our EOC as their as possible ideas as they're working on possible solutions. As you guys know, that like Counselor Dunstall just said, you know, they still can't open the restaurants, it's patios, but I think that with the EOC being the most the 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 group right now that's most in in tune with with what's going on with the province, what you're allowed and what you're not allowed to do. These are some suggestions. Maybe they work, maybe they don't work, but I think that maybe if we refer it to them, that just gives them additional options.
If the mover and secorders happen happy to change that to refer to the EOC, I'm happy to to read that and vote on it. All right, move by Counselor Ritchie, second by Counselor Dunstall. Resolve that the correspondence received from the DIA with reference to extended patios be referred to the EOC. Recorded vote. Counselor Bothwell?
Yay.
Counselor Dunstall?
Yay.
Counselor Frake?
Yay.
Counselor Cadwell?
Yay.
Counselor Ritchie?
Yay.
Counselor Sharp?
Yay.
Counselor Vane?
Yay.
Counselor Vardy?
Yay.
Myself, yay. So that's carried. We get new business now. All right, next up, we have new business. Counselor Bothwell?
Just going to do a shout out for the Garden Club. They're having their plant sale coming up on June 18, 19, and 20 at 472 Wolverton. They do ask that people make appointments. They're doing some social distancing. They have a Facebook page, so I'd encourage anyone who's interested in looking at the expansive selection of plants supporting the Grimsby Garden Club to look up their Facebook page, and there's an email and a phone number to arrange for an appointment to go up there and see all the goods they have. The other thing I just wanted to mention is the region is undertaking their Woodland Bylaw Review, and the Woodland Bylaw Review is going to be done by Zoom invitation. So you can register for that. It's Wednesday, June 17, between 5:00 and 8:00 PM, and there's an invitation on the Facebook Niagara Region Facebook's page or on their website, niagaregion.ca. I would encourage anyone who has an interest in our woodlands and the there's going to be changes in the region's handling of 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 woodlands with regard to enforcement and some other areas that they're changing administration with regards to the MPCAs oversight. This does impact our Irish Grove Woodlot, as well as Grimsby has subdelegated woodlands under one hectare to the region to administer. So this affects any of our woodlands basically in Grimsby because the region has oversight over them. So I would I would encourage anyone to read the background material and if they have comments or would like to participate to register for the June 17 Woodlands Bylaw Review online. Thank you.
Counselor Cadwell?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Jordan. Just two things. Just one, I'm sure everybody has seen and is aware of our West Link Memorial Hospital banners that have been put up around the town. They've been put up in three different locations, live in front of Town Hall, live in front of the West Link Memorial Hospital, and the the other remaining banners banner, sorry, along Livingston Avenue through town. Just give you an update, there's 31 banners total that were that were installed, and it came for a cost of $5,000. And that's excluding HST. But the reason it's a little higher than we discussed earlier because it was separate brackets had to be put on at the on the on the light streetlight poles at Town Hall and the and the West Link Memorial Hospital. So I want to thank again, Ashley from our Public Works Department, and also the provider of the brackets and banners, Josh from Zebra Signs. So got a lot of great feedback. Everything's looking good, showing that Grimsby's supporting our new hospital. The other thing I want to bring up is something that was written in the the News Now, the editorial of last his last edition of June of June the 11. We're in a paragraph talking about our hiring committee and how it was all put together. That Cadwell fought to get himself onto the hiring committee when he was initially left out. Well, I don't recall that being the way it was at all. And I I hope I remember members of council, I was asked to be on that committee with my experience being on the committee that when we hired through the last term of council, when we hired Mr. Brandt. So I'm going to leave it in, I actually sent the mayor an email. I hope you received it today, Mr. Mayor. So I'm going to leave that in your hands to get the appropriate information on this, which I think is a very serious misrepresentation of information. I don't know where the editor got it from, but whoever whoever he got it from, I want to clarify. So and I'll I'll stop at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Cadwell. I see no other new business. Our next council meeting is Monday, July 20, 2020 at 6:30 PM. And it's again available through electronic participation. And now we're going to move into closed session. Need a mover and a seconder to move into closed. Move by Counselor Dunstall, second by Counselor Vardy. Move by Counselor Dunstall, second by Counselor Vardy. Resolve that council meeting closed session under the Municipal Act regarding the following. Closed session under section 2392F, advice that is subject to solicitor-client privilege, including communication necessary for that purpose. Livingston Avenue Extension EA response to notice of completion. Closed session under 2392B, personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal on local board employees, committee of adjustment member selection. Closed session under section 2392F, advice that is subject to solicitor-client privilege, including communication necessary for that purpose, third-party investigation communication. Recorded vote. Counselor Bothwell?
Yay.
Counselor Dunstall?
Yay.
Counselor Frake?
Yay.
Counselor Cadwell?
Yay.
Counselor Ritchie?
Yay.
Counselor Sharp?
Yay.
Counselor Vane?
Yay.
Counselor Vardy?
Yay.
And myself, yay. We're now in closed session. Yeah, there'll be a five-minute recess to set up closed session. All right, now that we're back in open session, I have a resolution moved by Counselor Frake, second by Counselor Bothwell, resolve that council waive the rules and procedure to go past the 11:00 PM curfew. On favor? And that's carried. And I need a mover and a seconder to read the bylaws that were passed in closed session now and open. Move by Counselor Frake, second by Counselor Ritchie. Move by Counselor Frake, second by Counselor Ritchie. Resolve that report DPW 20-16 with respect to Livingston Avenue EA or sorry, Livian and Avenue Extension EA, response to notice of study completion, June 15, 2020 be received. Two council receive the privileged and confidential document, legal opinion, Part II order request, Livingston Avenue Extension EA, Airdan Burles, June 12, 2020. And staff be directed to prepare and submit a Part II order to the Ministry of Environment, Conservation and Parks prior to the July 6, 2020, with the assistance of Airdan Burles LLP, and in accordance with the resolution included with report DPW 20-16 as Appendix B. Recorded vote. Counselor Bothwell?
Yay.
Counselor Dunstall?
Yay.
Counselor Frake?
Yay.
Counselor Cadwell?
Yay.
Counselor Ritchie?
Yay.
Counselor Sharp?
Yay.
Counselor Vane?
Yay.
Counselor Vardy?
Yay.
Myself, I'm a yay. That's carried. Need a mover and seconder for the COA position. Counselor Ritchie, Counselor Bothwell? Move by Counselor Ritchie, second by Counselor Bothwell, resolve that the confidential report PA 20-13 regarding member selection for the Committee of Adjustment and Land Division Committee be received, and the recommendation contained therein be approved. Recorded vote, Counselor Bothwell?
Yay.
Counselor Dunstall?
Yay.
Counselor Frake?
Yay.
Counselor Cadwell?
Yay.
Counselor Ritchie?
Yay.
Counselor Sharp?
Yay.
Counselor Vane?
Yay.
Counselor Vardy?
Yay.
Myself, let's say yay. So that's carried. Need a mover and a seconder for the third closed session. Move by Counselor Ritchie, second by Counselor Dunstall. Move by Counselor Ritchie, second by Counselor Dunstall, resolve that legal counsel proceed with the directions as provided in the closed session in regards to third-party investigation communication. Counselor Bothwell?
Nay.
Counselor Dunstall?
Yay.
Counselor Frake?
Nay.
Counselor Cadwell?
Yay.
Counselor Ritchie?
Yay.
Counselor Sharp?
Yay.
Counselor Vane?
Yay.
Counselor Vardy?
Nay.
And myself, I'm a nay. So that's carried. Mover and seconder for first reading of the bylaws. Counselor Bothwell, Counselor Ritchie. Move by Counselor Bothwell, second by Counselor Ritchie, resolve that leave be given to introduce bylaw number 20-53 inclusive, and that be read first time. bylaw number 20-53 inclusive, and that be read a first time. Uh, recorded vote, Counselor Bothwell?
Yay.
Counselor Dunstall?
Yay.
Counselor Frake?
Yay.
Counselor Cadwell?
Yay.
Counselor Ritchie?
Yay.
Counselor Sharp?
Yay.
Counselor Vane?
Yay.
Counselor Vardy?
Yay.
And myself, a yay, that's carried. Mover and seconder for second and third reading. Counselor Ritchie, Counselor Frake. Move by Counselor Ritchie, second by Counselor Frake, resolve that lead be given to introduce bylaw number 20-53 inclusive, read a first time, now be read a second and a third time, finally passed, and the mayor and the town clerk do sign and seal the same, and the rules of councils of the contrary notwithstanding. Recorded vote, Counselor Bothwell?
Yay.
Counselor Dunstall?
Yay.
Counselor Frake?
Yay.
Counselor Cadwell?
Yay.
Counselor Ritchie?
Yay.
Counselor Sharp?
Yay.
Counselor Vane?
Yay.
Counselor Vardy?
Yay.
Myself, it's a yay, that's carried. Meeting is adjourned. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.